This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for September 26th, 2023. And if we could start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Anyone to stand?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, multiple, living, and breathing, just as it was.
Thank you. All right, we have a quorum tonight. Both Dan and Joy will not be with us this evening. And so let us begin with our agenda. I think we've got a wide variety of things to go through, but it shouldn't be a terribly long meeting, I don't think. Let's start with any open time for the public. Is anyone here? Yeah, Cindy?
Good evening. Cindy Palmer, 71 Glendale Road. I would like to commend the Select Board, Town Administrator, for whomever put together the plan to do the Collins Study, to look at equity in jobs and classifications and compensation, et cetera. I'm a new member of the Board of Assessors, and I am learning a lot, a great deal, about the value of this board and about this office of assessors. It's so critical that we do the right thing by the entire town by making sure we have the right values on properties, and that we enter them correctly, and that we tax people correctly, on and on and on, and with budgets, critical. Having said that, I will say that we, the Board of Assessors, are looking closely at the jobs, what people do, and how they do it, and also in compensation. And that's where the two things converge here, the two things I'm saying. Thank you very much for the Collins Study, because we want to make sure there's equity in our office in terms of what people do and how they're compensated. And that should be across the board for all roles throughout the town of similar people with their ranks and with their grades and with their levels, et cetera. And beyond that, I don't have any more to say. You do see later on that you're going to be approving I always get the letters wrong, a PCF for, no, sorry, PRF for assessors. And we're going to, we're working on more job descriptions, and we'll be submitting those. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Open time? Okay. If not, we will close open time. We have no hearings tonight, no presentations. Let's just write, go to Ed and the Town Administrator Report, please.
Sure. As a reminder, we have been informed by ever source that they will be doing the vegetation work in the area of their transmission right away is adjacent to White Loaf Road and Middle Road during the fall of 2023. We have had a vendor service our Town Hall septic pumps as the floats were starting to stick and not work properly. The vendor cleaned the float mechanisms and replaced two of the floats. Thank you for jinxing us, Joanna. But the vendor you used did a fantastic job over here, so we appreciate your sharing. Our fire alarm system and sprinkler vendor has completed our annual inspection, and everything was good with the systems. They now will be scheduling the obstruction investigation of the sprinkler, wet, dry, and pre-action systems. This inspection reoccurs only every five years. The exterior painting and woodwork repair on the historical Town Hall Police Station is currently taking place and is progressing nicely. All the woodwork has been completed. A few surprises have been found, and we are dealing with several proposals to see what we will be able to do within the original contract and budget. The flat roof area is failing and currently leaking. This will need to be replaced as soon as possible. I will be working on the numbers, and we'll be requesting additional funding to complete this roof replacement. I will be starting on the template of an information for quotes to get it out as soon as possible to hopefully get the work done this fall. The Mass Municipal Association will be having their Fall Legislative Regional Breakfast Meeting on October 13th in Beckett. Please let either Judy or I know if you would like to have us register you for that event. And then Norris Elementary School will be having their Annual Walk to School Day on Wednesday, October 4th. They will be staging the students to start the walk from the Town Hall parking lot that morning between 8:30 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. And then upcoming Community Public Forum for input on the Town Administrator Search is tomorrow night, September 27th via Zoom at 7:00 p.m. And Select Board meetings, October 10th and 24th. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions, comments? Just one clarification, the issue on the roof over at the old Town Hall, the flat roof you're referring to is the one over the police station, just for anybody listening. It's not the main old building, but it's the addition, right? We're basically on top of the police?
Yes, it's the only flat roof. What the historic portion is all angled and shingled. So yes, that's the part over the roof on the 1971 addition. You are correct.
Okay. All right. If nothing else on that, let's go on to any Select Board reports. John, you have any committee reports?
PPP met, but all those items are going to come up on the agenda later tonight. The only thing that won't be on the agenda that I'll report out is we started going through maybe 11 different potential changes to the handbook. And we went through, and several of them have been moved forward for the public hearing. I think there's one that we want to reword because it's just too choppy. But the intent, the Board is good with the intent. We just need to reword it. So I would envision, if not in the October, there'll probably, I think, best case for us to do a special meeting sometime between our October and November meeting for the public hearing that allows us to change and then bring that forward. Norris met. The only thing that really came out of Norris, and I have to draft it, but if you're reading the newspapers, you would have already seen it. The Norris School Committee wants to, or the local school committee wants to move forward with a one-time request from the Select Board in the next budget for some one-time money to fund a study. We believe that, or the school committee believes that they are quickly approaching capacity and will either, are going to outgrow the school. The question is, is that less than five years or greater than five years? We tend to believe it's less than five years, and we can go into more detail. But the first phase of the study is determine whether or not our back-of-the-envelope math is correct on our capacity issue, so that if it's less than five years, it's more urgent. If it's 10 years or 15 years out, we can just kind of plan for it. But then we also need to simultaneously move forward with, the committee is going to propose a non-binding question on the town meeting as to whether or not to remain a K through six program or to go K through 12 and exit the regional altogether. The first step in that is a, is a non-binding question by the town according to the 1966 regional agreement that we signed. So we want to move forward with that. And then depending on our capacity issue, it's are we looking to expand the current school, which potentially would cause us to raise the 1954 portion, which is on a slab, and rebuild that as a two-story portion that matches the 1994 addition, which would add potentially six more classrooms or another 120 kids to it if we stay the K through six. If we went K through 12, then more than likely, we have to abandon Norris altogether. And then are we looking for a K through 12 school? But first step is determine what's our projection of exceeding capacity.
At some point, hadn't you talked about maybe taking a look at combining K through six with West Hampton?
Correct. So that's still on the, on the table, too. Yep, for discussions. Their enrollment has gone up. They've gone, so they've gone from 87 students. They're now at 100. So that's a positive for their direction. And Finance will meet Thursday, and Capital Committee has not met.
All right, Stephen?
If I might expand on what Cindy said. The assessors met this morning, and I too am learning pretty rapidly, that by dint of history and opportunity, especially departments that had supplemental funding through grants or retained revenues, salaries are seemingly all over the place. So I would echo Cindy's support for the Collins Report and invite detailed input from the assessing department. A department in transition. We have an interim assessor. Though we have longtime credentialed assessor serving in a position with an ambiguous title, and it needs attention. But the position that's to be addressed tonight is a basic administrative assistant to take the load of the ordinary paperwork. Because we have a very experienced and credentialed staff person who can do the more technical stuff in limited hours that we have budgeted. And probably there's a pay adjustment that goes along with that when we really look at the department. It's a department that's responsible for the vast majority of the revenue into the town. So I would argue the return on investment is almost incalculable. It's many, many, many fold. And because there is no opportunity for retained revenue or grant support for this basic function of general government, it really needs an immediate look because of being in transition with some long-term vacancies and some medical leave issues. Needs immediate attention, but it needs to be looked at systematically and long-term and the depth of support for core functions of our government.
I believe those positions and the job descriptions therein had already been forwarded to the Collins Institute, as with all the other town departments. So we'd forwarded, I forget, Ed, 30 or so positions, maybe? Something like that?
I wouldn't even guess that, to be honest.
There's a number of them that have gone to Collins. So they've got all the current job descriptions, and they're taking a look at all of that in lieu of, and looking at them, I think, in terms of, you know, the market in the area, et cetera. And also, you know, is the job description really matching the role of what somebody does? So people have had a chance to fill out their questionnaires. They were given issues to deal with on their, their own jobs, and they've had a chance to respond to that.
Well, and that's excellent, and we applaud all the employees who have filled out those questionnaires. And the one, maybe two staff people in the assessing department filled out questionnaires. The Chair of the Board of Assessors also provided information. But what I learned today, what was still evolving today, is an awareness of how starved for resources that core function is. And I think this newly clarified job description for our long-term employee, which we'll see anon soon, is fundamentally important. Just wanted to give that larger context as we approve the administrative assistant later on. That's my update from the assessors.
Any other committee reports? Open space, anything?
Not ripe for prime time, I think.
Planning? You had a?
No. We did not have a meeting.
We will get down to ZBA in a minute, because that's also one of your committees at the moment, which we will talk about in a few minutes. At-Hot Grant Committee, not a whole lot right now. We have met again. We're going to be looking with the Council on Aging for a new grant opportunity. There's a grant application that is due in the middle of, I think it's about the second or third week of October. And so we've had a meeting already with the COA Director and her staff to talk about ideas for that grant application. So we'll be helping to put that in. And we're still waiting to hear on the One Stop Program from, that had been the application toward some money toward the Public Safety Building Committee, not the study, but the actual building itself, the design phase. And that was a request for about $500,000, and we should hear about that. It seems to be late, but I would think we'd hear about it before the end of October and know whether we have any chance of getting that or not. And then the other thing that's coming up, and I don't have it formalized yet, but we have the opportunity, and I think it's not a surprise, that we need to be looking out for grant funds for the Fire Department, whether it be for a tanker truck or other facilities, you know, other things that help the Fire Department. There will be some grants opening. These are FEMA Homeland Security Grants, so they're a huge lift that are going to be opening up sometime probably in the next two to three weeks. And we don't have a date on that yet, but I will say that it's far and above what the Grant Committee is able to do. And I would like to have us consider, maybe for the next meeting, taking a look at hiring somebody to help put a grant proposal together that is experienced doing Fire Department grants. And I do believe we've got a little bit of money left in the budget from the Fire Assessment Study that we might be able to tap into on that. So.
Are you thinking of asking somebody other than Chief Anderson?
Not necessarily. I mean, he's one. I don't know if we have to, I'm knowing, he's done it before, I know, because he said that to us. But I don't know if we have to look farther than that. I'm not sure. So that was just a question.
Right. So if I could, on that issue, Town Administrator, as the procurement officer, can jump in. But there's a threshold. Is it like less than $5,000? Do we just go with a known vendor?
Well, actually, I would, I would classify this as services. And as of November of 2022, they changed the procurement law on services for municipalities and schools. That best business practice now actually goes up to $100,000.
Without going out to bid, you can go up to $100,000 for services?
That's best. Yeah, that is, that is now the best business practice at around $100,000. Just for services, not goods, not construction.
Right. So I think, you know, definitely, if there's, if there's other people out there that have the experience, that'd be great. But if it's going to open in two or three weeks, and we only have a four-week window.
In two weeks' time from now, so yeah.
I'd almost like the Town Administrator to at least inquire from Chief Anderson, is this in your wheelhouse? What would the cost be? Oh, and by the way, who, if, who are two of your competitors? I mean, so at least in two weeks, when we come back, we're educated, we're ready to make a vote.
I think we need somebody online who's quite honest.
It is in that individual's wheelhouse. And I actually may have.
Is or isn't?
Is. And I actually, and I don't remember what the dollar figure is, but I believe I actually have in my office a $2 figures, one to do consulting work to help the Grant Committee, and one to be basically the principal forward entity on that grant.
Yeah. Because I'm just, I mean, just the tanker alone, if the base price of a tanker is $750,000, and going through MEMA is a 95% reimbursement rate.
Yeah. No, I know. And truly looking at, I mean, the instructions, the instruct, and like I say, this is FEMA, so it's even worse than MEMA. It's federal with the Department of Homeland Security. And just the instructions themselves were like 50 pages in terms of how to, how to apply. And then there's another document of how to get ready for the grant. It's like, that was another 30 pages. So I was like, I know this is way and above. I mean, we can provide from the Grant Committee some of the context of the town and the, you know, the basic background information. But all the technical stuff and the statistics and everything else that they're going to want to know, I'm pretty sure is way, way and above and needs that level of expertise. So yeah, if people are in agreement, I would like to say that we try to move forward on it. If somebody would like to make that a more formal motion than my.
I make a motion, authorize Town Administrator to enter into discussions with Chief Anderson and/or anybody else that he feels this would be in their wheelhouse so that he is prepared to come forward with a recommendation and action of the Select Board in two weeks.
All right, could I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good. Thanks. Ed, if you will take that on, please?
And it's.
Consider it assigned.
Yeah, Stephen?
Explicit or implicit, this is for a tanker?
Well, for Fire Department-related.
Fire Department-related grants. And so there are some that are staff-related. And so it depends on which one comes out. I think there's two that are due out pretty soon. One of them may be for a little bit more on a staffing support. But basically, these are kind of equipment.
Obviously, you're tracking at a very good level.
No, these are, these are basically equipment, infrastructure, sorry, no, more equipment and vehicle-type grants, I believe. So, okay, good. Thank you for that. Other than that, the Cost efficiencies committee is going to meet tomorrow afternoon by Zoom, 2:00. And I think that's all I have from my committees at the moment. All right, so let's move on to appointments and resignations.
Motion to approve or to accept Jerry Pacut's resignation as veteran service officer. Letter attached, his military deployment has been extended until unknown time. He's unable to continue in the position.
Okay. And I would just add that, from his letter, he has mentioned here that he has served the town for the past 10 years as a Veterans Service Agent. So much appreciate all the time and effort and work that's put into there, and best of luck moving forward with what you need to do on your deployment. So with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion to assess. Go ahead.
Motion to appoint Donald Burnier, at-large member of Open Space Committee, term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Okay. Any discussion? Want to give a little bit of background? He's got a resume in here. Let me see if I can read it here. Basically, he's been a webmaster, from a large part of what I see. He's been doing a lot of marketing and purchasing kinds of work. Has a degree in English from UMass, and apparently would like to be involved in the Open Space Committee. I don't know if Cindy, if you have, like to say anything just to add to that while we have it? There's not a whole lot of other detail that I have.
Very quickly, yeah, Cindy Palmer, 71 Glendale Road. I first met Don when I was a library trustee, and he has subsequently moved from that role. But he has a strong interest in our town's open space and conservation. He's a hiker. He's involved, he's already volunteered his time with me and the Open Space Committee on this and that. He's attended a meeting. He's eager to participate. I think it's a wonderful match for an at-large role in our committee.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion to assess.
I would suggest we pass over the next item because it comes up under the PCFs. If we act on the PC, on the PCF, then we act on the appointment. I think it's duplicated on the agenda.
Not really, the two separate items.
Fine. I'll make a motion that Richard Fasoli, interim Fire Chief EMS Director, Public Safety Building Committee term to expire with, when the new Fire Chief EMS Director is hired.
Second?
Yeah. And I'll just add to that. Yeah, this is, this is actually not quite a duplicate, John. This, if you recall, the current Public Safety Building Committee had a role still for John Workman on that, that was until September 30th. And so that is basically up, and we certainly can't have a Public Safety Building Committee without a Fire Department representative on this. So this is for interim Chief Fasoli to fill in that slot until a new person is hired. So that's the rationale there. Okay. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion to approve Doric Dodd's Historical Commission term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Okay. And again, Doric has been around on this commission for a long time. He's submitted his letter of interest here. He's had about 20 years' service on the commission at various times, both as a member and as treasurer. He certainly got a long interest as anybody who knows him in town history and architecture. Lifelong resident, et cetera. And I think that makes sense that he would want to be back on if his time had lapsed. He wants to become reinstated onto the Historic Commission. And we, excuse me, we know that they have, haven't lost a couple of members recently, so that's, open slots are available. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
You want to take the next one?
Yeah. So Stephen, do you want to talk about maybe the conflict that has come up?
Right. I'm the new kid on the block, both on the Select Board, and I was simultaneously, at the same election, elected to the Planning Board. So I currently hold both positions. There may be occasions where that would be a conflict. I'd review an issue only at the Planning Board and not subsequently or otherwise deal with the conflict. But as the Select Board designee or alternate to various boards and committees, I accepted an appointment as an alternate.
An associate member.
Thank you, associate member. Oh, the terminology. Associate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. And that seemed to be too heavy a concentration in the land use area. And hopefully, we can find some other volunteers to take that role. So I have not yet written, but I do this evening submit, submit my resignation.
There you go.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Okay. And so with that, what I'm going to propose here is that with Stephen's resignation, and I agree that this, if there was an issue that came up before the Planning Board, and then it had to come up to the ZBA on appeal, that that would put you in a difficult situation in terms of conflict of interest. And so with that, I would like to make a motion that we appoint John Lumbrue as the associate member, term to expire May 21, 2024, the next election.
Point of order?
Yes, sir.
Should we vote on the resignation first, since there's already a motion on the floor?
Vote on that. I guess I sort of accepted that. I think we might. Okay, let's have a vote on Stephen's resignation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did I, well, did I even second that? I'm sorry.
I seconded.
You seconded? Okay.
I did.
All right. So we have a resignation of Stephen. Okay. So now we have, I just made a motion about.
I move John Lumbrue be appointed to the ZBA as an associate member, term to expire May 21, 2024.
All right, then I'll second that.
What happened to the aplifia that you just mentioned of volunteers that would fill this post?
I was appealing for.
Appealing for volunteers. Yeah. Okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So done. Okay, that's it for appointments and resignations. Let's move on to new business. Classification and Compensation Study update. Ed, with the comments there.
Yes, I believe from the last time I checked that they have all the questionnaires for the different positions filled out, except the Water Department. But Tim Goddatt and Joe Slattery submitted a, a matrix, I would call it, of the three positions, off the water technician one, which I have sent along to Collins Center, which I will think will suffice. Haven't had a response back yet, to fill their questionnaires.
Tim Goddatt, 138 Valley Road, Water Commission. So, yeah, so Ed, when we spoke last week, yeah, so Dennis filled out the questionnaire for his, for the field supervisor position. The other two positions, we are not currently filled. So the matrix that Ed referred to was this. So we have job descriptions for all three positions. So I just put them in a matrix side by side so that it would be easy for someone to compare. But, but then after that, so we met with the Personnel Board last week, and it since it seemed to be, gee, it would be really helpful if we could fill out the questionnaires for the other two positions.
Yeah, we need to do that, yeah.
Right. So, so I've.
You're going to get a disadvantage.
So I, so I basically, you know, drafted responses. So we got the other two questionnaires filled out. I just, I don't want to submit them yet because I, we have a board meeting tomorrow, Water Commission, rather. And so once we, once we get these finalized, then I can give these to Ed. And then we'd have, because a lot of the information, actually, it looked like the questionnaire was consistent with the categories and the job description. So it was, you know, relatively straightforward. I could do a lot of cut and paste. But, but, but I want, I want the board to review it. And then, once we submit that, I guess we do have a request. And we talked about this at the Personnel Board meeting last week. And that's, you know, we're, we're trying to get the third position scored and formally approved. And so we were, wanted to request that whether the Collins Group could kind of assess the water, prioritize the Water Department in their assessment. Because, because if we could do that, that would help, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to really transition Dennis into the kind of a middle position.
But I personally, I'm going to say that I would not be in favor of that. We've got, what we've just heard from the assessors, we've got other, other departments that have got the same shortages of employees. So I think we've given the Collins Center a job with a clear set of expectations of what needs to be done. And the sooner you get those approved by the commissioners and in to Ed, I think that'll be the best, honestly.
Well, it was, so just from the committee's point of view, and I think this is still true, the anticipated delivery date is early December of the Collins Report. true, the anticipated delivery date is early December of the Collins Report. And understanding that, and understanding that the Water Commission is trying to meet an October 15 deadline as a means to retain current staff, that it was implied, maybe departing if that deadline passes. So what the committee suggested is that they've got to start somewhere. Instead of starting with A with the assessor, if they started with W with the water and did that and then just kept going, could an early release of that be out? Because I guess short of that, if, if the deadline can't be met, I mean, it's up to the PBB, we could always take it back up and score. I mean, the chicken or the egg? Something's got to come here and, and there's all these urgencies.
There's a lot of urgencies and I think I just want to lay the carpet down for just a level of equity across the board. I mean, yes, there's urgency there, but there's urgencies in two or three other departments, too. So I don't know. I personally am not in favor of having anybody jump ahead of the line. But that's my own opinion. Ed?
I'm just going to say this. Internally, morale-wise, every time you take something out of order and make an exception, it destroys the internal morale. I mean, there's a PCF on tonight's item that puts a new person in front of somebody that's been here a number of years. Like you just said, I, in my own mind, could not say if you're going to prioritize anything, is that water, is that assessors, you know, you know, what department it is? Because, you know, you're dealing with two things. You're dealing with classification and then you're dealing with compensation. And I'll be the first one to say that, yes, we're way behind in compensation. So I really think it needs to be done as a package.
So then I guess, I think it's time to light a fire under the Collins Institute. Now, they failed us on the HR report and my former colleague Francine would agree with me on this and has several times in the public record. And the fact is that when I ran over two years ago, it was about the wage study and pay equity. And we are now, if it comes out in December, it took us 18 months from the time we approved funding to get this report back. So if we really want, and I'm fine, I'm fine holding fast to this, but my God, we can't go any slower. We wanted this report for the last budget cycle. We're barely going to get it if we hold on to our deadline, which I have no reason to believe Collins is actually going to do what they said, that we're going to get it in December. In December, we're pretty much rolling through our budget process. We've got a lot of other things going on in December we'd transition to. So, okay, let's not bump the Water Department ahead, but it's time to apply fire to the Collins Institute to do what they're being paid to do. They got their DLS grant of $35,000, $38,000. Where's the work product? 18 months is way too long. And I don't, I don't want to hear about COVID.
I'm not sure that we actually assigned it then, if we could go back and look at when we approved the other money.
We started talking and then with every meeting, it's like, well, two more weeks, two more weeks, we'll do this, we'll do this. And there's tons of priorities and I get it. But for all the reasons that the Chair and the Town Administrator just argued, which I can't argue with, the pay equity piece, I can't think of another priority we have other than, oh, yeah, we need a new Town Administrator, we need a new Fire Chief. And it's, let's pick our battles, but they've had it now. And they've had their interviews, the reports are back. And if the Water Department's the only one left to come in, it's going to, in theory, be approved tomorrow night, one way or the other, whether it's amended or not, it'll be in. They've got everything they need from us. Do they seriously now need to take another 45 to 60 days to write a report that they've probably just have to take another one off the shelf that they wrote for another town and switch the names and jobs? Because that's what they're comparing us to.
But that's not the process.
No, the process is, let's take 24 months to get this done.
No, the process is, is once they have that information, they will come back and take the job descriptions and have conversations with the department heads.
So let's get that on the books now. Let's schedule it. Let's set up the calendar. When is it? Let's get the department heads in lined up in here.
That's been part of the discussion that the Collins people had with the Town Department heads on the, the phone call that they had, what, three weeks ago, perhaps, now?
I think it was August 22nd.
So a month ago. So, yeah, that, that was laid out for the Town Department Heads at the time, for those that were on the committee, on the phone call.
Because, because we brought the same issue to the Personnel Board back in March and we were told the Collins Report would be done in August. And so now, now, now it's the end of September.
That's what we were told as a Select Board. Now it's December.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so that's, that's all we have, Tim. So that's, that's it. Sorry.
Okay.
Can we move on? Where are we? So we know everybody has basically put in their, their questionnaires and that's with the Collins people, right? So that's, we will find out any more detail in terms of any specificity, if we can get a couple of benchmark dates from them, Ed, that would be helpful for the next meeting, just to let everybody know. All right? Next, right of first refusal, Brickyard Road. This is Lot 34 slash 148 on Brickyard Road. This is 3.6 acres. And this, I believe, has already had Concom assessors and Planning Board waiving the right of first refusal. And then it has also gone now to the Open Space Committee per Stephen's recommendation. And we have a letter to that, to that effect, too, that they are also recommending we.
It was not, it was actually not my motion.
Well, you're, you're sort of spearheading it.
Since I am liaised onto the Open Space Committee, I can address that. It was a brief conversation. The Open Space Committee took the open space plan and the criteria for evaluating opportunities to conserve land or the goals of the plan in terms of conservation land, which is inclusive recreation, but not some other interest, perhaps housing, doesn't reflect the full breadth of municipal interests, some of which, several of which are not covered under the statute. Nonetheless, it was a brief conversation and unanimous vote to recommend to the Select Board, as each of the statutory committees have recommended to the Select Board, that the Select Board waive its right of first refusal on the purchase and sale that gives rise to the notice of withdrawal. And it's specific to that purchase and sale.
Okay. All right, so would you like to make a motion to that effect?
I don't think we're going to, I don't think you're able to vote on tonight. I can't vote on this issue. So there's only two of you. I don't think you have a quorum for the vote.
Shoot, okay, we don't have a quorum because you.
Or I, I will not vote on this issue. I will abstain from it.
You abstain because you're in a butter, right?
Yeah.
You still have a quorum even if one abstains.
We do.
No need to drag out the process.
We can vote.
That's legal.
Don't, I'm not the attorney.
Okay, so if we have a motion, Stephen, why don't you make that motion that we just?
I, I move that on recommendation of the Planning Board, the Board of Assessors and the Conservation Commission with further review and input from the Open Space Committee, that the Select Board waive its right of first refusal on the subject property and more specifically, the purchase and sale contract that gives rise to the notice of withdrawal.
Okay, I'll second that motion. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All those who abstain?
Abstain.
All right. Vote is to approve, zero nays and one abstention.
Thank you.
With that, it passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed, for the point of order.
Thanks for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Learn something new all the time. Okay, Fire Chief Profile Duties update. John?
No update to report.
Okay. Why don't you have something for the next meeting, perhaps, or?
It's possible.
Let's keep that on track anyway. We hopefully will.
I'm sure it'll align with the Collins Report.
No, no, hopefully a little bit quicker than that, too. TA Search update is the next issue. We had a very good meeting after our meeting here on the, I think it was the 12th. We had our last Select Board meeting and on the 14th, we had a Zoom call with the principals from Community Paradigm and went through the entire process and have a flow chart about the TA Search process, which is out on the Town website on the Select Board page, if you haven't seen it yet. That outlines the various steps that we'll be going through. And so that is underway. And we have another step where they have also received comment from Town Department Heads in terms of what kind of profile and qualifications we should be looking for in a Town Administrator. And I believe they have reached out to each of the Select Board members and everybody has had an interview with them over the phone to also put in our, our input on that. And then a few other heads of boards or committees or commissions that are very much involved with, you know, lots of, that meet frequently and are very, very active, shall we say, in terms of their interactions with the Town Administrator, are able to also put in their information directly to the consultant firm, Community Paradigm. And tomorrow night at 7:00 PM, there will be a Zoom meeting for any town residents who would like to Zoom in. And again, you can find the information on the Town website, the Town Facebook page and on mytown.gov to Zoom in. And Bernie Lynch from Community Paradigm will be running that meeting. And that's for anybody else in the general public who would like to give thoughts and comments about what we would be looking for as a Town Administrator. So this is the community's chance to, to weigh in and give any thoughts to that as we move forward in that process. But so far, everything is on, on target, as far as I know. Okay, expense and revenue reports. You've had a chance to take a look at some of those that came out from Bradley, I think. And let's see, those came out. Hang on. I had a couple of questions on one of them and I'm trying to find it. Hold on. Did anybody have any thoughts on expense and revenues? I had just one and I guess it'll come up, it'll come up in a minute under ARPA. So let me, I'll hold off on that until it comes up. I'll bring it up under ARPA. It looks like most of these expenses for the first quarter through, through September 21 are pretty much tracking according to the percentages that one would expect. We've got some large percentages in some of the insurance lines, so the general insurance and workers' comp, I assume that's because those are upfront payments for the year and that's.
They are. They're 100, those and software support have been 100% paid upfront.
Okay, all right. Any questions about those or anything on the?
My questions are on revenue.
I'm sorry, on revenue?
Revenue.
Yep, go ahead.
So the payment in lieu of taxes, we, we budgeted $50,000, but we actually received an odd number, $70,924.33.
And this is related to the Thai Carmody, is that right? The Hoeyok Water Works?
That is the biggest portion.
But that, isn't that like a fixed $50,000?
It's not fixed. Actually, several years back, that declined. It actually went down. We all had questions of why at the time, but that was re-looked at. So it actually went back up again this particular year. And I, and I'm doing this by memory, is I believe the Hoeyok Water Works payment is either like $63,000 or $67,000 on its, on its own right now.
Who would be the other pilot?
What's that?
Who would be the other pilot?
You got me.
Fishing game would come under the state.
I should, I should remember and I don't. But I'll find out for you and send it out.
It looks like the, John, if I'm looking at this right, payments in lieu of taxes, right? We've received $70,000 on that.
Right, on a budget of 50.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we, so we took in more than we thought we were going to. But payment in lieu of taxes is usually intermunicipal governments that pay a fixed amount, generally speaking, by contract. The state would come in under cherry sheet, so that wouldn't apply here. So it's, so it's a town or a quasi-governmental agency other than the Water Department? And I'm curious.
Yeah, or a nonprofit.
Who that?
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to find out for you.
Are you representing that there is a nonprofit in this town that pays a voluntary tax?
Nonprofits would be eligible. I'm not saying that that's the case.
That there is one, all right. And then secondly, we, we've, again, according to this, our real estate taxes, we failed to collect $116,000. I mean, it's less than 1%, but is it safe to assume that that is delinquent taxes and all going to, we're going to have tax levies issued against those properties?
That would be my assumption also, but I will confirm that and let you know.
And in terms of the other one would be the Cannabis Impact Fee, where we look like we've received about half of what we had anticipated there? Instead of $30,000, we've received about $15,000?
That'd be correct, yeah.
And is that just a timing issue or is that anything to do with their, I mean, is it because of where it falls in the fiscal year when it's due to be paid or?
It's due to a couple of items and the Cannabis Control Commission actually in their draft regulations is basically had eliminated this. I did send, I and a lot, a lot of other municipalities sent letters or did testify at their hearing that they should hold existing contracts harmless. I have not seen the result of if they are changing their draft regulations yet or not.
So a couple, a couple of months ago, this came up and, and we gave direction to send a, a formal demand to, to the tenant that they honor their contractual obligation. And assuming that that has been done, as we voted, I believe now it is time to engage our attorneys. We have a contract in place. They have failed to apply by it. We have given them written certified notice that we want the contract enforced. They didn't pay it, it's time to turn KP law over to them. I understand what the Town Administrator is saying, that eventually the legislation might get around to change this law. But right now, they haven't changed the law. It's on the books. We have a valid contract in place and they have failed to honor their contract. And I, and I want the money. I want the $15,000 because we can see their sales tax. We know how much they're generating over there. It's over seven figures coming out of that little plaza. They can pay their $15,000. Yeah. Because that's the top line. $72,000, that's 3% of what they're doing. Divide that by 3, multiply by 100, you know what their annual revenue is.
$72,000.
You don't have to do the math, but.
No, no, but.
But I, so I make a motion that we, we engage KP law to enforce the contract that's on file and, and get our money. We, we budgeted that money, we expensed, did an appropriate expense in, with the understanding that money was coming in, it has not come in, it's created a shortfall, and now it's going to be offset by free cash, which is further going to hamper the town's ability to move forward.
All right, we have a motion. Let's have a second, open for discussion.
Second.
Give me a second. I mean, Ed, I'll leave it to you to say anything about this. I don't know. I mean, have we had any response from these folks at all in terms of why they haven't paid up what they said they would?
They're basically going on what their interpretation of what?
They're waiting for the government to, the state to change the, the commission to change their thing.
Yeah.
Well, perhaps we could, you know, do a, a letter of some sort to sort of give them a spike in terms of urging them to go ahead and pay this while waiting this? I mean, this is money that is technically due.
I can do that or, like I say, the motion is to engage KP law. We, we may need that help right now, so.
I would, I would like the Law Department to do it because my next motion is going to be to revoke their permit in town and close the business, assuming they don't comply with KP law. There's a contract, there's consequences for not. They signed that contract. They need to live up to it. Now, if they want to come back to us and say, hey, we think this is unfair, but we're going to pay it, we can set it aside, escrow the money and give them a year to figure out what's going on in Boston. But they need, they need to honor their contract.
Let's take one step at a time. Let's take, we've got a motion on the floor to have the Town Administrator engage KP law to figure out what is the best notice to give them in terms of their being delinquent on their commitment to pay this impact fee. Okay, so we have that motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. And you still want to make a second motion?
No, I said my, my next step will be, I'm foreshadowing to them.
After, okay.
They should just cut the check.
Not tonight, got it.
Could I have clarification? Because implicit in this defense by the taxpayer is that, in some way, the legislature will act in a way that applies retroactively?
Point of clarification?
Stretch.
This is not in front of the legislature. This is the Cannabis Control Commission and their rules and regulations.
And they have the ability to-
Yes, they do.
Apply something retroactively? Okay.
But I would just-
Well, the legislature will, some of the legislators will tell you that they changed the language in the legislation that gives the Cannabis Control Commission the powers to do this, so in a way that they wouldn't go retroactive, so.
And I would just, I would remind my colleagues that in the late '70s, the great promise of, we're only gonna collect tolls on the turnpike until the bond's paid. The bond's been paid. And we still got tolls. So I'm not holding my breath for Boston or any commission to do anything until they actually do it. Either way, it was before my time, but that was the promise.
Bill to be collected.
All right. Anything else on the expensive revenue?
One, my $2.
Anything on expense and revenue? Anything, anybody's noticed? It seems not a-
Oh, nothing specific here, only, and I don't know if Ed knows this off the top of his head or not. If not, if we could get the update. Is it anticipated, because this is done, that will the September 30th deadline, or give or take a week to file with the state for the process of the free cash and all that? Are we on track somewhere?
I won't necessarily say that's done. I mean, everything has been entered. I have some questions on some certain accounts that, okay, does this really belong here? Type of thing.
So, so I know we had, we had laid down the gauntlet, September 30th, get this done, so we can file this report on September 30th. I also am aware of what today's date is. So is it realistic of us to say that, you know, we, at this point, September 30th? Probably not, but maybe October 15th, October 20th? In the month of October?
As soon as possible. And I don't think, yeah, I don't think September 30th is realistic. I would hope October 15th might be. But I'll, I'll check around and come back to see what's still hanging out and give you a better feel, feeling at the next meeting.
I think there might be a couple of grants, for example, I think that might need to be reconciled.
Well, I mean, there's some strange things in there. I mean, the bond, shall we say, bond proceeds showing up as miscellaneous revenue and some other things that I can remember in my mind. But there's some other things that I looked at and said, this looks a little weird. Let me make sure that, you know, something didn't get, shall we say,
I just, I would anticipate-
Mis-registered or whatever.
I would just anticipate that, you know, after the filing, maybe two or three weeks, we would have our certification. Right, so just planning backwards from how many days we have to give notice for a special town meeting? Ideally, prefer not to have it in the month of December. You know, so if we can get it filed in October, if we know by November 1st, maybe we could go out on a hunch and tentatively book a special town meeting the week before Thanksgiving?
Absolutely.
You know, but we just need a couple of these boxes checked.
Sure.
Yep, okay.
You've gotta sit through one more town meeting before you retire.
Thanks, John. I was really hoping to avoid that.
No, not gonna let you.
But, yeah, with, with one of the, shall we say, CPC possible requests coming up, I knew that wasn't gonna be a reality.
Yep, indeed. Okay, if, nothing else on expense and revenue reports for '23 or '24 expense? Let's keep on moving. ARPA trackers. So the ARPA decision tracker hasn't changed too much since the last time. And it's such a big file that I, you know, I don't have Judy put it in the package. But I'll just review where we are. We have a couple of things that are still on hold. And I'll just ask Ed, have we heard anything more from our queries of the quilt shop?
No.
That's been on hold since June?
Have not. Have heard something further from Canal Lanes.
Okay.
And she had reached out, and she's been doing her homework and asked when the next deadline would be for an amendment to her submission. So whatever that Wednesday is at noon before the last select board meeting in October is what I told her for the deadline.
Okay. So, okay, and this was for the signage? Is that the right one? Because we approved the website one.
Yeah, correct. And I think, I don't know if she's gonna come back with signage or something else-
Okay.
-at this point in time. But she is gonna amend that.
So that's on hold? Okay, so those two are still on hold?
Yeah, and then there's one other one, which is an internal one.
Yep.
Which was from the Board of Health for funds to pay a contractual vendor to serve as the health agent.
For the inspection services.
For the inspection services, yes. And at the, at the time, I think this, and I'm doing this by memory, is I think the select board had approved something like $20,000, but had held $10,000 back in encumbrance.
Correct.
I can't tell you, as of the last warrants that were paid, there was like $335 left in the operating budget for expenses to that account. And I believe it was another, like, $650 in previous ARPA funds. So that is about to run out. So I would encourage the select board to take that, release of that $10,000 up for consideration tonight.
Let me just read my notes on this, so that we're all clear on this and get the right figure. So in this last year's budget, we had a separate line, a new line, I believe it was, the BOH contracted expenses for $6,195.94. And of that, as Ed said, there's about $355 left to pay that expense. But in our ARPA money, we had approved, actually, in, hold on. They had asked, I believe, for $30,000. And we had encumbered $10,000 of that. So we had allowed $20,000 for last year. We'd put aside $10,000 so that that could be added to the FY '24 amount that they would need and noted that we had put $6,195 in the budget for that purpose. So the two actions together, we, at the time, anticipated this would get through probably about a six-month time period. And this is project number 36A on the ARPA tracking list. So they have spent down the $20,000 previously for the previous year, I believe. And there is $10,000 yet to be released. So we need to make that available to them, I believe.
I, I don't disagree with that, but that's not what the tracker says. I mean, what you just verbally said is what I recall. But if I look at the tracker, 36A shows that we approved 30, but only released 10?
No.
Well, I'm just reading, I'm going line by line.
Okay.
36A.
Yep.
On the spreadsheet. On this one, the one that's in our packet.
Oh, that's, that's the application tracker. I'm looking at the decision tracker. So that's, that's the request that came in. So that's what Judy keeps. I'm looking at my decision tracker in terms of our, our meeting discussion. So I'd have to pull that one up in a second. But we had, just to clarify, so in November '22, we had approved, actually, we'd given them, we'd approved $30,000, gave them access to $20,000.
Yeah, I remember that.
And then carried in 10 toward this year, but not released it yet.
Right, and then gave them another, and set aside another 20 in ARPA?
No, we only gave them, no, we put in $6,195 in the budget, the real budget for that expense item. And then this $10,000 is all that carried into, into this. But let me pull up that tracker. I'm 99% sure on that. So we, we had approved 30, we only gave them 20. They've used that. Now they've used the $6,195 that we put in the budget, and there was $10,000 then that we had held back. I've got it as a big yellow hold on my spreadsheet from April, because that was right before town meeting and the budget. And so we had not formally released the $10,000 that we had encumbered.
So if we release this $10,000, that will get them through December 31st in theory?
Maybe, I mean, it's pretty close. I mean, they, they've already spent $6,000 out of their budget and $10,000. I don't know what the bills have been, you know, it's a good $3,000 probably each invoice. I don't know, so-
But $10,000 isn't gonna carry them to the end of the year? So what's the game plan?
Probably a couple of months. I mean, I don't know where the, where they stand with the invoicing right now. But, yeah, Ed, sorry.
Yeah, the theory would be by releasing this, that it would get us to the special town meeting and then figure out, okay, what is the path we would like to utilize going forward? Is that an additional ARPA request? Or is it a transfer of funds or a supplemental appropriation into the Board of Health budget to get us to the end of the fiscal year?
So, um, let's see. Let me just check this, John. Yeah, so in, on the, on the tracker, I think that you're looking at, John. So 36 was the, they requested $30,000, we gave them $20,000. And then 36A, they requested $30,000 again, but we only carried forward the $10,000 that was left over. So the total that they have had access to with this $10,000 is $30,000.
Right, okay.
From ARPA.
Yep.
Okay. So I would like to move that we formally release the $10,000 that we put aside in ARPA for the contract inspection services for the Board of Health.
Second.
Any further question, discussion? And it, like we say, it won't take them probably but a couple of months. I mean, maybe, hopefully, until the special town meeting. So, yeah, I mean, I think that's probably all this will get, depending on the level of business that the inspector's doing and the, you know, the monthly invoicing that is happening. Okay, so with that, if we're ready to vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No?
I'm opposed.
Motion passes, two to one. All right, and Ed, I think the last thing is we just need to double-check on that final figure on the financial software. I know you had come up with a real bill and then a possible, the yearly support cost, so we can recoup some of the $128 that we had put out as a, as a holding pattern on this one?
Yeah, I did a spreadsheet on that. I'll send it out to the select board members.
Okay. But I think it was around 90, 90,000 or something? You're gonna, I know, you're gonna tell me I shouldn't have asked you.
Yeah, I think it was like 92 or 93, but-
Okay. And, but that, that did, or we need to still make a decision whether we want to maybe put on a yearly maintenance cost in addition to whatever that conversion cost and so forth was gonna be?
Well, and for the 92 or 93, that would cover the first year, the actual implementation cost and the first year's support costs for both the financial software and the third-party payroll HR vendor.
Okay.
If the select board wanted to consider taking some of those funds and utilizing them towards the support costs for the fiscal, towards the support costs that would be incurred in fiscal year 2025, you could, shall we say, consider that.
Maybe we're better off just doing the first year and being done with that, so that we can chop down on that? So instead of the $128, it might be closer to 93-ish or something is what you had figured out? So would we make it, just round it up a little bit to 95, just to give a little wiggle room? Or do you want to wait and do a specific number in here?
I would do the specific number.
Okay, so we'll hold on that until the next time? But we're basically gonna have a little bit of savings, probably close to $30,000 from what we had set aside from our pending amount, okay? And other than that, I don't think we have any other ARPA decisions to make that I'm aware of. Does anybody know of anything else offhand? I think those are the only ones that were in a holding pattern. Okay, all right. So we will pick that back up at our, our next meeting in a way. I'd kind of like to do that, so we can sign off on the, the end of September kind of timeframe. So if you have those exact figures, we'll do that.
Sure, I'll send those out.
Okay. Next, any update on the amendments for the PQB? I know John said you guys maybe were taking a look at some of those and doing some update on the handbook, so there may not be anything else-
No.
-right now? Okay. Is there any other business that can't wait until the October 10th meeting? Okay, any old business? Anything under old business that we need to take up? We've talked a little bit about community cannabis, and this was the, basically, this committee to get the usage of that community cannabis benefit payment underway. And that was still something through the Board of Health that we need to still work with them on.
It was kind of a combination between that and also the opioid, opioid settlement, which rolled in afterwards.
Right, I know Kate had talked to it about, talked to us about it the last time she presented to us. And just a challenge with the leadership having changed now with the group that had been spearheading that on a more broader-than-a-town basis, I guess, so. All right, I think we're down to signatures, personnel change forms. All right, we have some PCFs and PRFs. Those got sent around on your email just later this evening here, or this afternoon. So first up, Board of Health, PCF Jerry Swanson.
Motion to approve PCF for Gerald Swanson, account change code, three hours, an additional three hours per week to be charged against the septic abatement fund.
Second.
Okay, and this was just, just a change of the account that it's gonna be charged to? This is, right, this is just the three hours that-
Right, it was discovered two weeks ago that there's a surplus of $58,000 that the Board of Health can use at its discretion, possibly inspector fees with their contractor instead of coming to ARPA. But right now, they're, they're opting to use this to get this employee up to 30, 37, 35 hours? Additional three hours a week.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, 35 at the most.
35.
Yeah. And this would be taken from the-
Septic abatement fund.
Septic abatement account. All right, all those in favor? Do we have a second? I'm sorry, second?
If that's Steven's second, Ed.
Yeah.
Did you? All right, all the, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Next.
Wire Department, they'll take them individually. PCF Thomas, retirement effective 9/7/23, vote to accept.
Okay.
Motion to accept.
For a second? All right, all those in favor for Tom Gunn, having retired, which I think he's already left us about a couple of weeks ago? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and thanks, Tom, for all your service there. I think that was also about a 10-year time period? Pretty close? Somewhere around that, at least that, I think, maybe, but anyway. So much, much appreciate all that time and service, and best of luck in retirement.
So the next one probably should be in two, there should be two motions for it. The first motion is PCF for Brett Simmons, new hire, water superintendent, annual salary of $91,000, effect, effective October 15th or October 8th? The agenda says the 8th. October 15th.
15th. October 15th, effective date, okay.
So that'd be the first motion.
Second.
Okay, all right. Is this Mr. Simmons in the audience? Would you like to introduce yourself? Pop up and just say hi, and where are you from, and?
Brett Simmons, 87 Pequot Road.
Okay, and you've decided to take on this job, huh?
I have.
Have you been with the water department previously? Or give us a little background?
I've worked for Hoyle Water Department for just under six years.
Okay, all right, good. All right, well, I gather the commissioners put you through the process, and you are their selection. So welcome on board. All right, all right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry, oops.
Well, I just wanted to classify, because the PCF will go along with a personal services contract.
That's what I was gonna do as a second motion.
Okay, I tie them together, but go ahead.
So the second motion is for the Board of Selectmen to approve the employee service contract as negotiated between said employee and the water commissioners.
Do we have that?
Should be in your packages.
Yeah, I thought it was just-
Oh, that's right. It'll be in your emails from-
I can give you a high-
With the PCS.
Yeah, so that's the motion. I don't know if there's a second we can discuss?
Yeah, let's have a second.
Steven, under-
Yes.
Second, yes, okay, go ahead, John.
So under discussion, I can give you the feedback from PPP. So the, the existing contract was very similar in form to the existing one that was in place for our current water superintendent. This, this is a non-statutory position, so the state is gonna look at it as three one-year contracts that run concurrent. The only, I won't even say it's an objection. The only note that was made is that, in general, no non-bargaining employee can have benefits greater than what's available to all other employees of a similar status. So this comes up under the vacation leave part. And I think it was three weeks vacation, X number of PTL days and the sick days. But the, the exception is the vacation days. So technically, brand-new employee to the town of Southampton, one year, does not qualify for three weeks vacation. He'd have to, the individual would have to be with the town for five years to get that. You look at similar service, and you helped me out, you asked the question. He's got six years at Hoyle Water Works. So if you take the six years, had he been here for the six years with our water department, he would have qualified for the three weeks vacation. The PPP did not hold up moving that forward. The PPP did not hold up moving that forward, they just wanted noted for the record so it's not just past practice that we automatically approve it. There was some logic behind it, looking at prior experience in a similar field that justifies the three weeks in there.
And does this, just as a matter of process, does this not normally come before the select board, before the water commissioners negotiate finally and sign this? Yeah, Ed?
Well, there's one other exception to the contract, and that's got three personal days in it rather than two, which are in the rules and regulations. But yes, last, last time around, the water commission worked directly with the select board before the, shall we say, the personal service contract was offered to the employee and signed.
So what are we recommending here? Are we gonna point out which, which section this is in? Is this in six, Article Six, compensation?
Yeah, I think the last bullet point there.
Paragraph three, okay. FY twenty-four entitled to fifteen days vacation, five sick time and three personal time. Then twenty days vacation in FY twenty-five and twenty-six. So are we?
So the motion under consideration is to accept this and sign off on it.
Are we not setting a precedent? I mean, why, why wouldn't we correct it to go along with our basic procedures? Why wouldn't, if it's only a week, why wouldn't we correct that? If it's only two days, why wouldn't we correct it? If we had been involved in it.
You certainly, you certainly could, I mean PPP didn't take that.
If we had been involved, we might have noticed that earlier on, right? I mean, I don't know, but.
Well, there's two pieces, there's what Mass General Laws says.
On legal ground, that's all.
Yeah, and what, shall we say, and I'm gonna say this on the vacation time, at least what is, shall we say, fair for the, fair for the position? And I know what the rules and regulations say. If, if I were to make a change to the rules and regulations, which I'm not about to because there's a number of department heads that carried over a grandfather in clause that were supposedly emergency responders that got an additional week due to that. But, you know, in, in the future, as changes come up, I might recommend thinking about defining what department head positions are, recognizing that in a lot of instances, yes, rather than, especially in the form we've got, we don't build internally a lot because we just don't have the full-time positions for assistance or whatever that we're poaching from other communities. So in the future, you may wanna think about taking a look and actually having two categories of vacation time and maybe adding a week for departmental, departmental head positions to what the general employees get, just to be competitive. I will say this, if, and I hope it does, and I don't think it will fail, is if the proposal that, a draft amendment to the PPP rules and regulations to amend our vacation time moves forward and is approved, someone that started around July in the fiscal year would actually have the ability to accrue just about two weeks vacation before the end of that first year. It moves it forward, so. I will say that there's two pieces, there's, shall we say, a practical piece and what the MGLs say. I know, we, the previous water superintendent, the PPP had approved, shall we say, additional benefits to, you know, long ago before I got here, to that previous water superintendent when they probably shouldn't have, shouldn't have, when that actually came to turning it into a contract. Select board didn't penalize the employee that had been here and back off it. So you've got general laws and you got practicality. If, in a lot of department head positions, I would say, someone coming in and actually not having any, being able not to have any vacation time starting off, they may not come here, so.
But they would have a week, right?
No.
Nope.
Nope, now you gotta get through your ninety-day probationary period, and then currently you would, you can accrue up to, if you started right in July again, you could accrue up to five days of vacation time by the end of that fiscal year.
Right, but that's one of the things that is being proposed to be changed in the handbook right now.
Exactly.
Right, but, but the other thing is, we're talking about a salary position, a department head position. This is not an unreasonable request, I mean.
But I'm just looking at it, just, just trying to be equitable, when we've got other people that have retired, department heads that have retired, we've had a fire chief retire, we've had COA director retire, I just wanna be.
None of those have employment contracts.
Huh?
None of those positions have employment contracts. If you wanna compare this job to other jobs in town, well, correction, the fire chief does. It's the police chief and it's the highway superintendent, and those are unique positions. This isn't the rank-and-file eighty-twenty rule, this is the twenty percent that the policies don't apply to.
May I ask a question about the personnel handbook? So before I came, I looked at the personnel handbook and I thought there was a paragraph in there that allowed for exceptions, right? And so.
But the final exception has to be approved by the select board.
Right, right, but that's all, so I guess, but I heard earlier, well, we don't wanna violate any laws and so on, but I think the handbook allows for exceptions, and so I think we're, you know.
Technically, the handbook cannot overrule Mass General Laws.
Okay, just, um.
Right, but MGL doesn't specify how many days vacation time you get.
The Mass General Laws specify that someone that it's not a statutorily allowed contract position may not have benefits that exceed what every other employee has.
Well, then I guess I need to see the highway superintendent's contract again because I'm pretty sure that one's not in compliance with the handbook that's out there now.
Well, in terms of this one, how do we, how do we deal with this particular issue?
Well, the motion on the floor is to approve it.
To approve it the way it is.
At some point, I'm not gonna withdraw my motion, so we have to have the vote. And if, if I'm the only one voting in favor of it, then the motion dies and we can go in different direction.
I just wanna be clear, so we've got the two weeks vacation, which is not standard for what?
Three, three weeks, right?
Three weeks for the first year, FY twenty-four, fifteen days.
Right, so it's fifteen work days.
Fifteen work, okay.
Yeah.
Fifteen days first year, FY twenty-four, and then three days personal time. So I'm hearing a stronger argument against the personal time, the two-day versus three-day, than I am, in a way, against the vacation time. But I'm, I'm willing to hear what the druthers are here. If you think we're on solid legal ground with this, I'll take your word for it. I just don't wanna do something. If, if we're in the process of revising the PQB handbook, why not make this change right now, knowing that that's gonna be revised within the next month or two, and then amend the contract? I mean, that would be another option, would it not?
Yeah, everything's in play, I mean, I don't know that the subject of this agreement's gonna wanna hang around for another month. I'm assuming he's waiting for approval before he gives notice on Hoyok.
Most likely, so what was the, the actual discussion with PQB? If you would just repeat that again, that was their, they just wanted to bring that to our attention, that this was different from?
They, they requ, in order, they allowed the exception to go through after justifying it on the record in their minds, because of the time and service to the Hoyok Water Department, while not a superintendent, but at least in the, in the same field, applying those six years. If he was here with the Southampton Water Department the entire six years, with the exception of the personal time, the vacation time would be there.
As well as twenty-seven years working for environmental science, ECS. ECS, which, okay, it's not water, but it's a lot of the skills and responsibilities cross over, you know, heavy equipment, so on, so.
Again, I'm just going back in, in my mind, of other positions that we have approved, of other department heads that are not the same kind of contractual thing, but I mean, I think there are other people that have come in and we've put into positions that have had years' experience in other communities, but that did not count in terms of how we treated them when they came on board here in Southampton. They still started at the very beginning, am I wrong on that?
None of them would have been, had a contract done. That kinda is why all this comes up.
Just because it's contractual?
Correct.
All right, I'm gonna stop talking about it. We have a motion and a second, Jonathan?
I didn't hear a second.
Oh, she did, I think, yep.
And I appreciate the rationale coming from Personnel Committee.
Okay.
And I think we've had other employees get hired with four weeks vacation, let us say that too.
We have or the Water Department has?
What Department has?
Well, yes, prior to your tenure on the Water Department, some of the commissioners were a little rogue, right?
All right.
Thank you for your service.
John, were?
Hmm?
Were?
I don't know, I think.
I figured I'd have to say it.
Joe, Joe's doing the best he can over there.
Tim is, Tim is too.
We have a motion and a second to accept the contract. Is, is, knowing that these are slightly different than what we would normally find, but this is what has been recommended to us. So with that in mind, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reluctant aye.
Thank you.
Well, nothing against you, Brett, welcome aboard.
Yes, nothing against you, it's more the process, so welcome. All right, next up.
So this one here, the PPP, at the meeting laid it, laid this issue on the table. And we've kinda, we've already discussed the reasoning behind this with the Collins. Correction, there were two requests. One that we did approve was during the period of the departure of the superintendent until the arrival of the new superintendent, between September seventh and October fifteenth, there is an adjustment for payout of grade, my terminology, it's not, it's not on there, going from thirty dollars and some odd cents to thirty-eight dollars and some odd cents during that window that Dennis is acting as the acting superintendent. That one was approved, the permanent change was tabled.
So the, okay, so this goes from September?
September seventh to October fifteenth.
Okay, all right, got it, all right. I have a motion on the floor, a second?
I'm not sure I understand the motion.
So he, he is coming out of the technician's role?
Let's second it first so that we can discuss, yeah?
Oh, second.
He's coming out of the technician role and acting as the acting superintendent between the vacancy and the, and the start date of the new hire.
Right.
So that two-weeker, well, it's more than two weeks.
Sort of a month, right, so.
Yeah, that thirty-day period, he, he's wearing the hat of superintendent. So he's getting an additional eight dollars per hour for that period of time.
Okay, I don't know that we need any further explanation on it, it's clear.
While Tim's at the podium, I just wanna clarify one thing because I was asked today, and I wanna make sure since the water superintendent position was a salaried position, this shows an hourly rate, so is that the water commissioner's intent that it's an hourly rate and not salaried?
For that time period, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, just wanted to make sure.
So, so is the other PC, John, is the other PCF on the agenda?
The permanent change?
Yeah.
No, that, we, PPP set that on the table.
Right.
And then we're gonna try and get the expedition, or expedited, but that failed.
Right, that failed, so I'm gonna weasel in just one more question from before, so. Should, you mentioned maybe coming back to the PPP board and seeing what else we can do? I, I thought I heard that from the prior discussion.
Yeah, because the original issue that started this was the, you put forward, the commission put forward a new job description title, and PPP took no action on that. It's sitting on the table, we could take it up. I suspect even if we took it up and we got it passed there, that when it got here, it would probably get held, pending the Collins report.
Okay.
No, we don't know that, we've got two other members that are not.
We've got two other members.
Oh, I just.
But, but even, I haven't heard from Steven actually on this issue, so I, I mean, is it worth trying to get a, a vote on exped, you know, before we did an expedite?
That's a separate decision, I'm gonna finish voting on this, this particular one on the.
Yes, because you haven't voted on it yet.
Minimum upgrade, say, for Dennis Senegal during the time that he served as a temporary or interim water commissioner, we have a motion and a second.
We do, thank you.
Okay, I think, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, right, that passes. I think if you have another position, I think that, I would say just take it up with PQB.
Okay.
All right, next up, we have a PRF for a library substitute.
Sorry.
So another PCF for extension of the?
Oh, I'm sorry, one more, sorry.
Fire chief.
Fire, PC, a motion to approve PCF for Richard Fasoli, extension of interim fire chief through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, or until position is filled if sooner.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? I think that's pretty self-explanatory, interim fire chief through December or earlier if it's filled, okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Motion to approve a PRF for library and substitute as needed, fifteen dollars, seventy-one cents per hour. The job description that was given to us was last approved in August twenty-first of twenty eighteen, eleven dollars per hour. There are currently four available library substitutes, some are being used in other areas, and the director is looking to recruit a fifth to be able to fill in as needed. Fifteen seventy-one is currently what the four existing library substitutes make.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Johanna, since you're here, do you want to say anything? You don't need to, but if you'd like to say something?
No, I just wanted to say thank you and to introduce myself to Stephen. I'm Johanna Douglas, I'm the director of the library.
Nice meeting you.
And with our concerns about COVID raring its ugly head this winter, we wanted to make sure that we can have continuous service. Thank you.
I like that. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, motion passes.
Good night, Joanna.
Thank you, next.
I mean, I'll just, can I do, can I do, I'll, I'll do three of those as a package for veterans?
I think so, okay.
All right, a motion for a PCF to accept Jerry Pequot's resignation as veteran service officer, PCF for Michelle Murdock, extension of the temporary veteran service officer through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and then to approve the PRF to post for the veteran service officer.
Second.
All right, and just a question, why only until October for the?
I, I think that was submitted prior to his resignation, there was something in the timing.
Yeah, actually, and I don't know if Judy put it on the left-hand side, the updated agenda changed that to October thirty-first. That was just me with fat fingers.
This was October thirty-first?
Oh, it is October, so just until October, so?
Yeah, because that's, that's, my, my thought is extending her as the temporary to the October thirty-first gives us time to post, interview and put the paperwork through, hopefully to hire.
Okay, got it, okay, well, that's a package motion, so.
Yes.
All right, I think we have a motion and a second, yes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, that passes, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Motion to approve the PRF for a part-time administrative assistant, additional assistant, so this is a new position to go into the office. The job description was last approved February fifth, twenty nineteen, at fifteen dollars an hour, twelve hours per week in the range, in case you got there, is an oddball range, but the high end of that range does not match the scale, but it does match what the existing employee's being paid. So they don't, they did not want the advertisement to appear as if this job could potentially make more money than the current person in that office. So it's why it taps out at like eighteen-something, I don't have it in front of me.
It's, it's fifteen seventy-one to eighteen seventy-six?
Yes.
And this looks like fifteen hours a week, yeah?
Yep, fifteen dollars an hour, twelve hours a week is what they're targeting, but they have a range.
Okay, on the P, whatever this one is.
PRF?
What do I look at that? On the PRF, it says number of hours, fifteen per week, so just wanna check.
Maybe it's a, maybe it's a mistake on the agenda.
Maybe fifteen hours a week rather than twelve hours a week? On the PRF that I'm seeing that was signed by PQB?
And that could be from me capping it over from the PPP, PPP agenda, I would go by what's on the PRF.
Okay, fifteen hours a week, okay.
I mean, the theory here was with the two of them, that they would be able to. that they would be able to staff the office Monday through Thursday for the 8:00 to 4:30.
Right, okay, all right. Did I have a second on that?
Second.
Yep, okay, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, that passes, thank you. Next.
And then council on aging, PCF Pamela Conant, program coordinator, 14 hours a week, grade two, step nine, $19.90 an hour.
Second.
Under discussion, this particular issue or this particular position spurred a lot of discussion at the meeting, and Town Administrator was there. They're starting off at a step nine, which would indicate nine years of experience in the same, in a similar role. Not necessarily, and this is where the, the other subject came in, not necessarily in Southampton. Right, so the job description called for an associate, the individual had a bachelor, so that gives them two extra steps. They have over 20 years of experience, not specifically within the council on aging, but within marketing, sales, responsibility, supervision.
Relevant experience.
The board, the board was split on whether or not that rose to the level of the step nine. And I think part of it was that, and I can understand where some members were coming from, because of this particular department has other revenue available to it outside of the general. That they can, the perception is that they can make things work. Right, wrong, or indifferent is a perception. And that there are people doing a similar job within Town Hall that are basically, they're at the same level of pay, give or take. And then the predecessor to this position was making $18 an hour.
This is a new position, is it not?
No, it went empty for like one year. They got rid of it and then they brought it back.
Yeah, the, the program coordinator resigned as of June 30th, 2023. So at the, for fiscal year '23.
It was like at 19 already.
Huh?
Wasn't she, she was?
No, she was at 18. But the budgetary change, because if she had continued, would have taken it up a step, which would have been at 18.76. And at the PPP meeting, we had said that it would have gone to 19.29. And I've looked at Bradley's spreadsheet and for some reason, yes, he had this position going to 19.29. But to go up, it was a tweener, so if we had followed the process along the way and gone past the first close step to the second, it would have been 18.76 an hour. And this is one of those ones where, yes, we do have individuals, and one individual, shall we say, in, that's been employed here for a few years. That probably should be higher than what she currently is, that's in the same grade, but has number of years of service here, that is at 18.76 per hour currently for fiscal year '24.
Okay, but this, this has gone through again. And again, I don't know that we've got similar responsibilities in other departments in terms of a coordinator, program coordinator offhand. But I hear what you're saying in terms of other people that have been around longer. But that's, that's part of my earlier comment on contracting. That was a different issue. But you've got somebody with a higher education degree than what was asked for, for one, and relevant experience, I assume. So this, this has been put forward, so I think I have a motion and a second?
Oh, yeah, yep.
Okay, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
No.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. All right.
And then last is administration. This is a PRF for Town Administrator, full-time benefited contracted position, 40 hours per week. So the PRF is permission to post.
Yeah. It does it in parallel essentially with our, with our search process. Yeah, okay, I think, yeah, this is just parallel to our search process, essentially.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, all those in favor? Just one quickie before I do that. This job description goes back to '17, so.
That was, so I explained to the, under discussion with the committee, I said, this is the last one that we had on file.
Right.
This, along with everything else that Ed commented on earlier, has been turned over to CPA. They ultimately will come back after listening to us in our interviews with an updated job description.
Perfect, so this is kind of a placeholder to get it started at least, but we'll have a more updated job description coming forward.
I, yeah, I kind of did the whole thing just for transparency. So, you know, it brought, John did a great job explaining it at the PPP meeting, that, yeah, there's still a lot in flux that Community Paradigm would help the select, select board with. But I wanted to know them, let them know it's a little bit different process with the search, shall we say, vendor, and that it's kind of an ongoing process, but we weren't trying to skip PPP in any way, or finance in any way, shape, or form.
Okay, all right. So, a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, that takes care of that, thank you very much. And just, just clarity on the one previous, that was a two yay and a one nay on that, on the COA one?
Correct.
Okay. Just for our note taker. All right, next up, I think licenses and permits.
Motion to approve a one-day wine and malt permit, Conant Park Pavilion, to a Daniel O'Connor of East Hampton on October 7th, between noon and 7:00 PM.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. And Stephen, you're up.
Oh, next we have a whole series of warrants to inform the public about. You've all seen notice of this, but warrant W-24-8V, as in Victor, is a negative amount of $275. It's a vendor warrant refund. Next is personnel, 24-9, in the amount of $274,569.54 payroll. Payroll deduction warrant, 24-9, the amount is $47,748.81. Payroll deduction warrant with retirement, 29, 24-9A, in the amount of $190,375.30. Next up is warrant W-24-10, the amount is $112,238.77. Again, as a vendor warrant. Continuing vendor warrant, W-24-10A, $200. W-24-10V, negative amount of $245. Back to payroll, P-24-11, in the amount of $327,236.27. Payroll deduction warrant, PD-24-11, the amount of $54,206.33. And W-24-12, in the amount of $578,625.98.
Okay.
Nope.
That's it, all those? Okay, thank you very much.
Page three.
Okay. Just got a couple pieces of paper to sign.
I have a question on the warrants.
Yeah.
Not necessarily for Stephen, but I'm just curious on warrant P-24-9 of 8/31, on page seven. The line item that's being charged for, I'm assuming this is payroll for an employee, says fiscal year '22, council on aging earmark. Now, we're in '24 right now, so I'm just, it's just off to me that we're going all the way back to '22 and charging something, so I'm not sure it's right.
If.
We're going to money from Senator Viall.
If it's, well, I would have to take a, what's the account number, John?
245-100-176.
I mean, it's right in line with where the ESER and the ARPA money is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe that's the state, state earmark that was given to us through Senator Viall.
Right, what is it?
In fiscal year '22?
Rather than '23?
Okay.
Which is, which is still ours, I guess. You bring up a good point and question is, you know, should, should we now do something to?
Close it, roll it forward, or?
Right, exactly, yeah, that's all. Thanks, John. I had missed that.
Yep. Well, and as we're tracking down other, other earmarks from the senator, we can add that to the list. All right, any other questions on the warrants offhand?
Nope.
All righty, I think we've gotten through them all. Thank you, Stephen, for doing all those wonderful signatures.
And thank you for pitching in when there's not available.
Filled in a day there, yeah, exactly, okay. I think we have a couple documents to sign, so we've got the park license permit to sign and the Town Administrator search charge I think we have to sign somewhere, Ed?
Yes.
Okay. And we have a set of minutes to approve for.
Motion to approve the March 23rd, 2023 minutes of the board's selection.
Okay. I have a second. Stephen?
Second.
Anybody notice anything in particular on that? For the minutes, for this March 23, 2023? It was back, what? A lot of this, I think, was related to the school, if I'm not mistaken. There's all, a lot of it was budget, budget discussion around the school.
Yeah, a lot of these go back to the odd, shall we say, Thursday meetings joint with the.
School committee at the time, as we were.
Could be school committee, most of them were a joint meeting with the Finance Committee. This one was with the Finance Committee.
Right.
And I think the school was here, but.
This was school on this one, I think, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, perfect. Okay, anything else under pending items, Ed, offhand? Anything new on our Green Community Grant?
No, I've moved three of those along. I am still, well, I won't say it. The vendor is still fighting with Eversource to get the information back on Norris's school HVAC controls.
And we'll be taking up a couple of those issues lately, later, but nothing either on the assistant accountant recruitment?
No.
Okay, so we need to just keep that on the front line here. I really am nervous that we have a one-person accounting department here. We need to get that position filled as soon as we can. It's already been open quite a while. So I'm assuming Bradley will advertise it where it needs to be advertised and it's already out there, I guess, on the account, accountant's main page, et cetera, but wherever we can do to get that going. So anybody out there who would like a position as a part-time assistant accountant and you've got the skills, please come talk to us. All right, we've already gone through the calendar and we know that we've got a Zoom meeting for tomorrow evening for the citizens who would like to chime in on Town Administrator profile and qualifications at 7:00 PM. And other than that, I think we will be adjourning and moving into an executive session. So let me read the reasons for the executive session. Per MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Dispatch. MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. Executive session minutes, May 23, '23. And then MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. 15 College Highway. So with that, I will take a motion, roll call, vote, please, to adjourn the, the open session and move into executive session.
I'll second your motion, Lumbray, aye?
John, aye.
Falls aye, okay. We are adjourned at 7:45 and we will take a minute or two break and start up with executive session. Thank you, everyone.